Then we have a whole list of minutes. Can we, anyone had a chance to look at that unless someone would like to make an exception? To approve the minutes listed as a list of minutes.
I don't have any additional comments.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all the minutes as printed.
With your corrections, right?
Yes. Do you get that, Mike?
I'll make the motion to approve the minutes as with your corrections.
Okay. Seconded.
Seconded.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
You want to call? All the votes. Four main applications, are there any?
There's one that you can't do it because you can't see the plan and you have to sign it and you can't sign it. So that's off to your June 29th meeting.
Do we have enough time? Do we have enough time?
Yes, because everything, the governor's order extends everything for 45 days after the emergency ban is lifted. So there's sufficient time for you guys to do that at the end of the month.
Correspondence?
There is none.
Going forward, we feel that there is none, right?
No.
Request to ratify the English Way to Buckley Place.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm representing Abington Investments LLC, which has recently purchased the two lot subdivision that the planning board had approved with a prior owner named Kavanaugh. And at the time of that hearing, we weren't part of that hearing, but the survey had assigned the name of the road to be the Corporal Robert English Way. As is the tradition in, under our subdivision regulations, to name new public roads for some of our veterans who were killed in action. After we purchased the property, or my client purchased the property, it was discovered that that name Corporal Robert English Way had already been previously assigned to a different subdivision. So we obviously couldn't name this road with the same name as that road. And this road being a two lot private way off of Dorsey Street, it was requested that we submit a name to the board that might reflect either the history of the area or the history of the town or something that would be deserving of a name. And after consulting with his family members, the La Pointe family would like to submit the request to have this be named as Buckley Place in name, in honor and tribute to Jack Buckley, who recently passed away. The Buckley family, as I mentioned, supported this and approved this. They were deeply grateful for this idea. I know a lot of you know Jack Buckley, but just briefly, he was our town treasurer, starting from the age of 29 years old. He was a town moderator for 10 years. He was the state representative from Abington for six years. He rose up in the ranks of state government, eventually being appointed as the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Secretary of Administration and Finance. He was a lifelong resident of Abington, a co-captain of the Old Town Abington Football Team, a Korean War veteran, a charter member of the Abidin Citizen Scholarship Foundation. And he helped to establish the town's community preservation committee, a true and loyal servant to the town of Abington. And we thought that naming this small side street as Buckley Place in honor of John Jack R. Buckley would be appropriate. We request that this board ratify or take a vote to approve that name change.
Would someone like to make that motion?
I thought he'd get an intersection someplace.
I'll make the motion.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
Just out of curiosity, how did we miss that there's already an English Way?
We didn't, I've known there's an English Way. It's in an approved subdivision plan. And the engineer who drafted the plans called the veterans agent, who did not ask, who didn't call. And they had a sign already printed for the roads that already had names. And he just said, oh, here's a sign, we'll give you that one. So nobody bought to swing that by and ask, I have had a conversation with him and asked them to touch base with this office in the future. I think there's only one name left, to be honest with you, from World War I.
Okay.
Any further discussion? On the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you very much. And if I could ask, Mr. Smith, when you have a chance with my letter I submitted, I prepared a form that would require your signature that I'd like to then record at the registry deed, so people who research this title will know why the name changed from English Way to Buckley Place. Thank you. We can get that on record at your earliest convenience.
Now on the installation of granite curbing at Buckley Place.
Yes, again, Sean Riley, representing Avenue Investments LLC, who is now the owner and the developer of this two lot subdivision. They are in the process of actually constructing the road. And upon looking at the road construction plans, which were designed by that, a different engineer and surveyor, we discovered that it was approved subject to there being vertical granite curbing on only the right side of the entrance road. And Cape Cod burn would be on the left side, which was a little odd. We weren't sure of exactly why it was done that way, or what the purpose of the vertical granite curbing might be. There is no granite curbing anywhere in the area of the subdivision on Dorsey Street, on Taylor Road, Murphy Street. And so it's a little bit out of place. It doesn't add anything to the road as far as drainage that Cape Cod burn wouldn't do. And, and the owner applicant is asking for this board to take a vote to delete the requirement for the vertical granite curb. It only runs about 150 feet on the road and then the road splits off into two driveways. That way, the road would be uniform. There's no change to the actual construction of the road. And for the board's knowledge, I did a little research and in my letter, I submitted a list of a couple of other streets in Abington, which have Cape Cod burn on the left and right side. And also I researched several surrounding towns, Noel, Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Whitman. They all allow small side streets to have Cape Cod burn. Obviously, a Route 139, a Route 18, you'd want, you'd want vertical granite curbing. It's just, it's much more expensive, but it doesn't give us anything for a side street. And I believe the fire chief and the DPW director also submitted letters encouraging and asking the board to vote for this deletion of vertical granite curbing, especially on these smaller, thinner side streets. As in the fire department's opinion. And they've had problems where, where they've had to like get the engine jump a curb because it might be a parked car or the road's not wide enough. And it has actually blown some of the tires in the past. So he's in favor of the Cape Cod burn on a side street like this, as is the DPW. Because eventually, in this case, it's going to remain a private way. But I know the DPW would like to see more of the smaller streets use Cape Cod burn. Because when the town eventually takes on ownership of these streets, they also take on future replacement of the, of the vertical granite curbing, which is much more expensive. If you read my letter, I won't regurgitate everything, but for those reasons, and with the fire department and DPW's support, we would request that you waive the vertical granite curbing for this side of the street.
Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded.
I'll second it.
For discussion purposes, first of all, as far as I'm concerned, I would agree with the fire chief on the curbing with, where the roads are so narrow. On the other hand, when it comes to the DPW, I would agree veritably with it. I'm not quite sure that it costs us more money to maintain granite curbing because it stays up there for literally years and years if it's put incorrectly. And there is very little maintenance, probably more maintenance for the slope faced curbing or the monolithed curbing that they refer to. I did, despite the fact that I lived on Summer Street and also on Assland Street. And so I know what it's like not to have a curbing. I spend money every single spring and energy, which I enjoy the energy, fixing the, because people just drive over the lip. And it's a mess and people get, neighbor across the street had a snow plow, it's not a snow plow, but a repair truck stuck in it. One of the last notes. But in any case, and Pilgrim Road certainly, take a look at it if you want to go down Summer Street, take a look at it. See the people that are, the grass does not go to the curb because of all the cars. If you go on Assland Street, there's a family there that's got a sign out there, please don't park on the lawn signs. There's about eight signs on the lawn. It's just typical. If you want to go to Gillespie and see where it's not done, take a look at that. It is disgusting what happens when we don't have a granite curb. I know it's more expensive. If you go to Warner Street, you park on the sidewalk, so you can't walk on the sidewalk. You have to walk into the street because the cars park up on the sidewalk. So that alone, way if you go down there, you see at the end where cars try to walk through. But anyway, that's my take on it. I clearly agree that with a short road, I have no problem.
I'd like to, I'd like to say as well, I, I agree with this small project of Belt and Burn. But I've kind of come to my own conclusion and the same thing you're seeing Wayne, the more I study it, the more I realize that granite curbing is the only thing that will stand up. And the other part is, is that, like you mentioned, the streets, every side of the road just run down to dirt because everyone drives into the curbs and get up on the lawn. And it's, it seems to be instinct that everybody drives up the top of your grass. But I do, with this project, I would accept the, the format.
Any further discussion? On the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
On the petition for roadway acceptance on Redford Place, Cookway, Belt to Circle. Go on.
This is Eagan Development, and this is the subdivision that's off of Plymouth Street. This is part of the, we haven't had one of these in a number of years, roadway acceptance. But as you know, a developer would buy a piece of private land, they would come to the board, get the subdivision plan approved, they then build the actual subdivision, the roadway, the drainage per the plan. The town's engineer goes out and inspects everything. We filed the as-built plan to show everything. That as-built plan has been submitted, has been reviewed by the town engineer. And now the process is to submit a petition with all that information to the town. So that eventually a town meeting could vote to accept this road as a public way. And in doing that, the road becomes a public way, qualifies the town for more Chapter 90 money for road maintenance throughout the town. The first step with the as-built plan, after it's been inspected by the inspector, by the engineer, is to have the planning board then review his report. And if you're satisfied, to then vote to recommend that the selectmen adopt the layout or accept the layout as a public way. The selectmen would then be required to have a public hearing with notice to the abutters for the same purpose, to take that vote and send it to town meeting. Town meeting then has to take a vote to finalize the public way acceptance. I'm not sure that we're going to be able to have town meeting vote on it at this upcoming June town meeting. But that is to be determined. Make it pushed off by the selectmen until the fall. But your, the step that the planning board is involved in is before you tonight, it is just to basically review the report of your engineer, and if you're satisfied, to recommend that it be put to the selectmen who adopt it as a accepted public way.
If anybody wants to see it, I can share a screen and I did download it. So if anybody wants to look at the as-built plan, I'd be happy to do that.
And I believe your engineer also sent an email saying that he was fine with the status. There's a, the roadway itself, the drainage is fine. There's a couple of minor things, some lot markers that were going to be flagged so that the engineer could verify they were in the proper location. And there was also some off-road swale area in a junction where some yards meet that is to be re-swaled and will be re-inspected, but it doesn't have anything to do with the actual paved part of the road.
What about these two at the end and onto Carriage Hill?
Carriage Hill, I think the board's familiar with that. Mr. Egan had offered to go into Carriage Hill, which is a private way, and try to increase or improve their drainage. Last year, we had asked the Carriage Hill residents to sign a, basically an ascent form so that we would have permission to go into their street. It's not a town road. We didn't get all the ascents back and I'm not really sure. So we said that we'd try it again this spring. Then COVID-19 hit and kind of put everything off. I talked to Mr. Egan about it today. And I said, you know, at some point, you have to decide whether we can give up or not. And he said, he'd like to make another stab at it and try, he's still willing to pay for it out of his pocket, even though it's not on his land. So we are going to now reconnect. One of the owners over there did not want the work to be done because they were selling their house and they didn't want the road to be opened up while they were trying to sell the house. I don't know if it's been sold yet, but we'll check it and we'll try to coordinate with the sale and the work to be done. But that would be separate and apart from this acceptance of this road.
Go on, is it possible to have a bond or some kind of legal documentation? Putting that straight in that tree. And also the other thing, it would be nice to have the, the work completed. I realize it's very little and I will say this about this developer, he has done a superb job. We haven't had a lot of problems with him or any problems with him that he hasn't handled quickly. And I would like to recommend as one member of the board to, for the selectmen to accept the roadway. But I want to make sure that the drainage work is done outside the project and a little bit of work that needs to be done. I don't see why it can't be handled with a small bond or something.
Yeah, I can work with, with John Stone, the DPW director, as to however he wants to handle that. Just to be sure, the drainage on site is working fine. It's the drainage off-site that was a problem before we started, that we're trying to repair for them. Assuming that this isn't actually going to go to town meeting until a fall town meeting, we'll probably have that Carriage Hill done before then, unless somebody at Carriage Hill objects to it. That's the only thing we need there, a scent.
The, I was visiting the site there today and that swale is quite substantial, that one between the lot, one and two, I think it is. And I mean, it's got areas where it was holding water for days and you can see the areas where the puddles, puddles formed. It, it looks a little bit more significant as far as a vehicle having to drive down there and move grades around. I got to say, overall, the, overall, the grading around the property is beautiful. I mean, of all the different properties. The only thing that's jumped out at me is when I came around Buckley, around the corner to where Cooks and Buckley join. When I started, well, I started, then I started looking back and I noticed that there's a lot of trees missing along the road. I guess, and one of the neighbors said trees had died, but they hadn't been replaced. They were just removed. And a lot of, a lot of curb work that is, I would have been upset if I paid for it to have it. It was, it was really set, they set it in concrete and some of them were tilting one way, the drought is broken out of other ones. Some broken stone here and there. Everything about it was going great until I, until I started noticing those kinds of things. And I had a question about in this road acceptance was, oh, I wish, you know what, I have questions. I was hoping our engineer was going to be online with us tonight. Cause I don't remember if maybe someone remembers. The, the neighborhood's beautiful, but everybody looks like they have a little miniature toilet in their front yard. They've all got these, one's got their little transformers, there's a fire, a horizon, then there's an unmarked one. Everybody has. And they just sit there in these beautiful lots and they're these, and they sit there tilted to the plastic. I went over and wiggled them and you can't get them to stand straight for life. And, but, but as far, I wondered if, if there was landscaping originally in the original plans for the, around those little boxes on the on the development. Does anybody remember those? If there's any landscaping around the electricals?
I'm sure there is. I'm sure all that we had on there will get this.
To my knowledge, there was nothing specifically regarding, I know what you're talking about, Jeff. Essentially, when you used to have telephone poles, you'd have transformers on the poles and things like that. Now there's no telephone poles, so you've got transformers on the ground. You've got hydrants, transformers, different things. It's, that's what a new subdivision looks like now. And some homeowners do choose to put shrubbery around them. Some of them leave it, they think it's invisible if you don't put landscaping around them. I know what you're talking about. As far as the curbing comments, I'm surprised to hear that because I think we got a very positive letter from CMP, if I recall. Commenting on how well it was constructed.
Like I said, I was just up there, I took a bunch of photographs and you know, there was, it's, this, it's a very strange setup. Like I said, some of them are tilting, some of the drought's broken in between them, some don't have drought at all. It, it looks like someone moved, put the grout in with the, with the biggest thumb in the world. Because it rubbed up the inside of the, of the stone. You know, you get, you get a sense that there was definitely no craftsman on board putting those in there. But the drainage did seem to be working up there. I saw the work done at heading over to the, I was wondering about that drainage over on development we were just talking about. That, you just talked about them extending the drain over, Carriage Hill, Carriage Hill. The neighbors have said that the drainage behind those two houses on Cooks Way are doing pretty well. That since they had, I think that was what we last discussed as well, that they had done some, since they put the grass in and did some regrading, that slowed down quite a bit there. But what, what do we, on their note, they talked about the easements on the side that incorporated trees being turned over to the town. That seemed to be something for discussion, I'm not quite sure. And the other one was I guess granting, granting of the easements, so that's, that's pretty typical, isn't it Sean, to do the, that the, the 40 foot layout is, goes beyond in those trees that's sitting in the 40 foot layout. Aren't they?
Yeah. The road acceptance, actually what it involves under town council's review is the town takes an easement or is granted an easement, actually. And for the road, all drainage easements, all water and sewer lines, and there's a tree planting easement is what I think you're referring to. The standard subdivision design is a 10 foot wide tree planting easement, so you have a tree-lined street. That's how it's currently written. So all of those easements are put together in a document that would be signed and recorded after town meeting votes to approve and accept the roadway. That allows the town, the town to accept and undertake any future maintenance in the future.
The PMP, the sidewalk, sidewalks between lots two and three, and then that drainage swale. There was some question whether that sidewalk was where it's supposed to be, the location.
Yeah. Well, there was literally, I think, it was a little, it was like three or four inches wider. And I think it was in the PMP cover letter, the board could vote to accept it as, as is, basically there was a curve on the sidewalk. And I don't have the plan in front of me, but it's typically what a five foot wide sidewalk. And they measured part of the curve and he drew the line and out of the pavement was five foot three, five foot four, five foot two in different places. Nothing that you would know driving down the street or going down the sidewalk unless you actually measured it with an engineer, with a tape and an engineer. I know that I think Patrick had sent an email from PMP.
So Larry Silver's office sent a letter that I sent to all of you this morning, dated today, about that he's spoken with Patrick about the comments and intends to rectify all that situation. And then Patrick did send an email late this afternoon saying that he did receive a letter this morning via email from SEA. He did speak with Larry Silver on Friday about the work in progress to address the comments on the as-built and acceptance plans, and I agree with the content of the letter. Please let me know if you need anything else. So they've had a conversation and Patrick was okay with the outcome of that conversation. If you have anything else you want me to send to him, I'd be happy to do that.
Sean, I apologize if I missed this part. There was a comment about the drainage swale in between a couple of the lots. Was that addressed, resolved? Is it going to be? Yes, definitely going to be. And that's one of the issues that Larry Silver from SEA Engineering and Patrick from PMP was talking about. And I think one of the things that Jeff was alluding to. There's basically a common swale where the lots meet and it was holding water. So they're trying to, to fine tune it so it drains better. They have to, as the weather and the seasons change, they go in and just keep trying to fine tune it. So they're going to go back out there and said, in fact, SEA's contract said SLT, which is the extra construction contract, is in the process of fine grading the drainage swale areas, which are located in the joining areas of lots one, two, and three. I believe all of this stuff is to be done within the next two weeks and Patrick was just going to go out and verify.
Certainly contractors and everything that we've asked them to do, and I don't see any reason why he wouldn't. I, I really wouldn't have any objections to recommending the selectmen approval of it. But I would like to have some kind of documentation on the road work to be done on Carriage Hill.
Well, I can put something in writing to you and just as a fallback for the board, if you're concerned about any of those issues you mentioned. This, as I mentioned, the selectmen have to have a public hearing. So they'll be noticed to the actual abutters and the neighbors. So if the swale isn't fixed, they'll be able to bring that up at that point in time also. So it's in Mr. Egan's own best interest to try to get that resolved before that is taken.
I hope that they have it brought up at the selectmen's hearing so that they can. Great. Does someone want to make a motion on this, one way or the other?
Did we discuss about, Wayne, I was kind of waiting, seeing what you, what the other board members weigh in about the trees that didn't make it through the season and didn't, weren't replaced.
Are they street trees?
Street trees.
Cause that wasn't noted by PMP and I have not heard that at all from Mr. Egan or SEA.
When, when you look around, it's like you start to see it around the easements with, before you get to the easement, about 50 odd feet away, that's when the last tree is and then you'll have nothing. And there are a few areas, and look around, it's nicely laid out, but a few places, it's obvious where the trees aren't there because it just looks, there's something missing in the cadence of the trees.
Oh, are you talking about underneath the high tension wire easement area? Because that might be a reason why there's not a tree there.
No, actually, I saw on both that, that easement we talked about on between lots, the pension bases one and two, is that what it's, yeah, between lots one and two. It's an L shape. And on either end of it, you have a narrower area where the drain comes, where it comes down to a drain that goes underneath the, that goes underneath this road. But to the left and the right of it, there is just, there's no vegetation for maybe 50, 75 feet. And there's just, so there's a big, there's a big gap between tree, one tree and one lot and a tree and another lot because of the, because of the, that this gap of trees, it looks like there's probably a couple of trees missing there, maybe just two. It doesn't look like, there's aren't huge gaps, but there are few areas and one of the, one of the owners there pointed up, said, pointed out to me a couple of places where that I didn't see, that where some trees had died and got removed, but they weren't replaced. Is that, you know, does that something that needs to be considered with the roadway, guys? I'm just, just wondering. Curious what the board thinks about it.
Obviously, if they're supposed to be there, they should be there.
Yeah, I'm looking at the approved subdivision plan.
I don't have the escape one.
It, it shows some proposed areas for street trees, but that's always just, it's on sheet. Sheet is this?
This is one.
Yeah, it's not one, it's like, it's sheet N, nine or 10. Let's call it proper graphical plan. Let's call it topographical plan. I mean, it just shows some proposed areas, looks like this proposed street trees.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at, I think it's on the plan I just zoomed in onto on screen, it was, is sheet four, roadway acceptance sheet four.
Oh, you're back at the roadway.
Which, which sheet four?
Sheet four. And zoomed in, there are these tiny little pictures that I assume represent trees. And looking at this, it looks like there's gaps between the trees and one lot and just the way it's out there.
I'm looking for.
No, that's. This. He does that one.
Hold on, I'm trying to make it a little bigger for you.
It would be down, oh yeah, down the bottom there. Just off the screen, but it's actually the part of the neighbor talking about is on a sheet that's below that because that, that drawing stopped at lot two and halfway through lot one. That is four. And yeah, down in the corner, do you see these little, little squiggly circles around the property lines? It looks. Yeah, there's one, oh, your little hand was just. If you push that up a little bit, see those little circles right below where your pointer is right there, one, yep, and there's one below it, there's another one, yeah. And it's interesting, that's what it looks like out in, out there. And I couldn't read it from the tiny eight and a half by levens I had. But there are actually the trees are missing, just like they're showing the plan. So I guess, I guess they're, they're not missing anything, I guess.
Right, they're supposed to have three trees per lot and you're right, lot two has a huge frontage because it's on that corner, you can see it on the plan.
Yeah.
So they're showing three in front of the house, basically.
Yeah, then, then, and then when you get to the next, that next part where, yeah, where the top of your pointer there, that other part of the L shaped. Easement, that's where you'd notice a whole bunch, that the whole, all around the whole corner, there's no trees and I don't see any on this drawing either. So I guess. I guess he's, as long as he's fulfilled the contract, he's, that's fine because look a little closer at some of these things next time.
No, he definitely has the three that are shown on the ASBILT plan and they were out there and counted by your engineer, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, like I said, I only had the eight and up by eleven plans and I just couldn't read. Out there with me. All right. So I don't have any issues with the trees. It's just that, that, like you said, that drainage, the drainage issue in Carriage Hill and the drainage between lot one, two, and three. That have to be. Addressed.
Yep. Well, I, I can offer that Mr. Egan has, I think, been good to his word throughout and is, and is often, he's not required to do carage hill, but he's offered to and he's, would like to make another try at it. Because he'd like everyone to kind of be as proud of this as he is. So I know I put some things in writing prior to this, this meeting, but I will certainly update that and submit something to the board. And see when we can get that scheduled over the summer.
Let me ask one thing, Morgan, just because I realized it afterwards. The asphalt, the asphalt sidewalks were put in fairly recently. And what they did was they had put down, they put down their topsoil. Yeah, they put down topsoil out to the edge of the road. And then they did the, the, they did the asphalt sidewalk on top of that. And what that leaves is there's a, about a one to two inches of topsoil missing between the road curb. And the, and the asphalt walkway, that's what walk would rises above and it has, it doesn't have a lot of places, it doesn't have soil packing the sides of the asphalt. And without, besides the fact that it's a tripping hazard, although it's kind of hard to argue that one. You can trip anywhere. It, it, those sidewalks are exposed, the edges will, will do deteriorate and asphalt, anything when they're not. When they're not backed up with soil. But that was pretty universal through the whole, through the whole project. It looks like, it looks like there was, soil was supposed to be added. All right. Has anybody, did anybody go up there and look at that just in the last?
I wasn't looking at it.
No, I was looking at a lot of stuff that next time, going to look a lot closer at some of the other because they did a good job up there, but there were a few things that. Like, like, like those electrical things that obviously just had, there was no thought given to it. It was just, we got to have it on the plan, just put them there. And it's just a shame to have such a nice neighborhood and have these really honky tonk, plastic things sitting in the yard, tilting and. Do, actually, I took a picture, I was going to put it on, but it looks like a little, it looks like, they look like everyone has a little graveyard in the front yard. They're all got green stones and they're different shapes. It's really bizarre.
I, I know. Problem with it is most of the utilities, that's, those are their units. And, you know, I just don't see them any different in other places. I know what you're talking about. Perhaps they'll maybe appropriately around them would be good, but by the same token. I hope you, you call it exact before you shovel in the ground, but.
Well, it's, it's outstanding because I, I went over to look at. Carriage Crab, Crabtree Street and it's night and day between the way they dealt with the utilities there and the way they did here. It looks like, they, it looks like they installed it crooked. I mean, you just go over there and you, I tried to move it, it was held on by one screw. It tilted, but I would have had to really lean against it to make it straight. And all of them, they're all tilted. And it, and they're fading. The other thing, they look like they've been in there for years. They just horrible looking green. It's just, when I went over, like I said, on Crabtree looked very nice. There were a lot of landscaping around each one of them, but they were clustered together and they looked, they looked like they were official as opposed to, you know. Job lot. Equipment out there. So I just want everybody, I think we should just pay attention to some, to some kind of that detail next time around. So that looks a little nicer. We're looking at the trees, most of the cat, look at something like that.
That's something you might have to address directly to National Grid or Comcast or Verizon because they're the ones that install those things. We do try to require that they get installed within this, within ten feet of the side lot line so that not right in front of people's houses wherever possible. And also trying to keep a distance from a fire hydrant. But you're right, it's worth the mercy national grid and they come out now with the plastic covers.
All right. So we, we made a motion, second motion?
We have a motion seconded.
Yep.
I'd really like to stay updated on where the outstanding issues stand as this moves forward towards town meeting. I don't think there's nothing that can't be overcome, but I don't want to. Be sitting on the floor of town meeting on June twenty second and all of a sudden find out, oh, well, they haven't finished the grading of the swales or. We haven't reached back out to the neighbors or some other issue, so.
Right, and just so you're aware, there, there are four road acceptance articles on the town meeting warrant right now. But if the selectmen don't have their public hearing, we will not be voting, would not be taking up those articles at the June town meeting, June twenty second. Selectmen are voting actually right now to officially set it up is June twenty second. So if they don't have their public hearing between now and June twenty second. The, the actual vote for town meeting will be sometime in the fall whenever the selectman schedule is special town meeting.
Do we have to hold on a hearing because it wasn't done within so much time before the town meeting? Once they've made that, it's not like the.
I don't think so. I've asked town council, but I haven't received a response. I think if it goes into next year, if we don't get a fall town meeting, you have every right to ask. For the roadway conditions and make an additional recommendation at that point because it would have gone all winter. But usually the board of selectmen will look for the boards, planning boards' recommendation at their public hearing.
And we know that as well is a concern of, of the affected neighbors there. So I'm sure that Mr. Egan's getting on SLT to try to address that. Because he wants to make sure that that's addressed before the selectmen have their public hearing.
Well, I'm still concerned about the Carriage Hill Road issue.
Yeah.
Because. You know, if, if that becomes an issue where because of the runoff from this project, there's damage to their sidewalk and street. What liability does that then put on the town because we approved the plans? I just want to make sure that we stay on top and try to get that resolved.
Right, and just for the record, remember that runoff was pre-existing, the development of this property, those catch basins on Carriage Hill were actually. Added by the Carriage Hill or by the town to try to address a pre-existing problem, which has not been corrected. We're going to try to improve it. On Mr. Egan's dimes or the town doesn't have to pay for it. But we will need to get the consent in the agreement of the owners of the road, which are the people who live on Carriage Hill. I think the majority have no problem with it. We just had one person who wanted us to pause. We'll see if we can pick it back up again.
Do we want to go on?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Pardon?
Is that full one?
Sounds like it. So.
I said aye.
Were you opposed Wayne?
No.
Okay, so it's unanimous?
Unanimous.
Okay, thank you.
In my previous Zoom meetings, I've seen people raise your hand if you want to vote yes. That sometimes works.
Or you could also do the symbol, you know, with the wave thing.
Yep.
On the petition for roadway acceptance, evil estates, crafty land extension, two circles, recommendations for the order selection.
They're a little early, aren't they?
Please.
Well, they haven't finished McQ circle.
Well. They keep telling us it's going to be done and they never do it. I for one would say. They haven't done everything and until they do it. We probably shouldn't approve it because they promised on one situation, it's in the letter. They're going to do it on this month and then they're going to do it by next month and it's still not done and it's going to be done by the end of May. And that was only a week or so ago and. If I was a betting man, it probably hasn't been done. But though I would. I'd be in favor of postponing action until all work is done. They certainly have had twenty years to get it done. That's a long time.
I agree.
What is, which part is the Crabtree Lane Extension?
I'm trying to actually get that up on the.
It's at the top of Shaw.
It's everything. I mean, I. I can't see particularly approving one street and not the other, especially if they tie individuals.
No. Yeah, nothing has improved. They didn't do McQ circle and the asphalt on. Crabtree and especially around the circle is cracking up. It's got great big, great big gaps of opening up in the road and it looks like Shaw Avenue after fifteen or twenty years of, of. Wear, tear, that'd be big, big cracks opened up. Everything else looks pretty good. But also saw that I was going to bring it up, whether the neighbors were here on this thing or not, but to not address a. A barrier, a, a, a gate up there between the two cul-de-sacs. I saw that three, those three emails from the various people from Crabtree and Bayberry. Talking about the traffic as well. I don't think they mentioned a gate. But we haven't so many other, we haven't so many other projects have had these. Emergency gates installed.
That. I know what you're saying, but that has nothing to do with what the roadway door approval or anything else. And the original plans is what they're supposed to do and, and. There's some bounds and pipes that ought to be set. There's easement rights will need to be granted. There's, going through it, there's a whole load of things that. Haven't been done.
Yeah.
And so with, with, with the track record that they have. I'm not forgiving them any of it.
I agree.
This subdivision's been going on for twenty years. We need to get, he needs to get it right. My opinion.
I agree.
So.
See it, if I have to see it finish, it's not a good sign.
Um. What do you want him to do?
Complete the subdivision.
Do you want him to put the circle in?
Well, that's another issue. That's, that's quite another issue because. That's what's supposed to have been put in there, but now because the other road coming off it probably would cause more. Plus, who knows if it's on Blakeney's land at this point or not, that's another.
Well, nothing. Needs to be completed to the plan.
Right, that's, I think that's as simple as that. Complete everything and when it's all completed, then we'll recommend it to the selectmen. But until it's completed, with the track record that you have, we're just not going to do it. Because we will have egg on our face with this contractor.
I agree. So no vote?
Oh. Well, I mean, we can have a motion and seconded. Not move the, move it forward to the selectmen.
Well, yeah.
I'll make that motion not to move it forward.
Hold on, hold on. Motion not to move it forward?
Yes.
Or is that to deny?
We're just, we're just making a recommendation to the selectmen, so I'm not willing to make, make the recommendation until it's complete.
So a negative recommendation until it's complete?
Yes.
The recommendation is no until it's completed. And at that point, we will make a recommendation to the. We won't go to select.
That's the wording it should be.
Obviously, it's not going to select because we have the Senate.
Actually, they already gotten it as a petition article. So I can send, I'll send them a letter that says you're not. Recommending it. To go to town meeting.
Yes.
Until it's complete.
That's correct.
Okay.
Oh, was that motion all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I've been right. So no one has unanimous. And a request to reduce the bond that's sent through this base.
I'll make that motion.
Sean, what is the timeline for finishing that top coat?
He wants to get it done this, this summer, obviously this year. Got to do the sidewalks and the top coat. And all that, all the street trees are in. So this is one big step here by, by reducing the bond, it frees up some more cash so we can keep moving forward. Everything, he, he wants to have everything done. Ideally, if the timing works out for him. We would be able to have a road acceptance plan and ASBILT plan to submit for the fall town meeting. Depending on how quickly the engineers can put that together. But the roadwork itself will be done this, this summer.
So I've, I've been up there a couple of times. All the lots are built, so.
Oh yeah, there's four more to go.
Most of them are built. So I mean, I think it's time to start doing some of this other work. We're still having water rush off onto, you know, down the streetways. The road getting to those, that development's a mess. We need to start finishing this road up. That's my personal opinion.
I couldn't agree with you more. And it's in Mr. Rosen's best interest to get it done. He wants to get it done. There, as I mentioned, there are four, four or five remaining lots. The goal is hopefully to get the foundations in, get that heavy equipment out of the subdivision and then do the top. All four of those, or four or five of those lots are under agreement. So I think you'll see that happening in the near future.
Sean, on this bond, I, I know we've got some other work on other roads that are outside this subdivision. PMP include the cost of that. That was.
I believe that, yeah, it's all still in that estimate being withheld. If you remember the, it was a dollar for dollar exchange. What we did was basically cut back a few trees. it was a dollar for dollar exchange. What we did was basically cut back a few trees, but agreed to do the extra paving. So the numbers didn't change.
Oh, well, that, that may be true, but with PMP, he has the trees being put in there. And by the same token, he hasn't got the asphalt that goes into the new roadway or the old roadway again.
Oh, I see what you're asking me. I, I don't know how he calculated that or not. We're still obligated to do that.
Yeah, I still have a half a million dollars, so it's probably not an issue. But I just wanted to bring you that, that to your attention.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. We'll have to, I mean, that'll all get done at the same time. And we've got to coordinate with the DPW. I'm not sure when the DPW is going to do the remainder of Dorsey Street. Because of the COVID virus is a question about chapter 90 money, but we're going to do our share of it. When I say our share, it's Century Estates.
Oh, someone want to make a motion to reduce the bond?
I'll make that motion.
For 534,079. It's from six.
I'll second it.
Motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
No one propose?
Thank you.
Thank you. And then a public hearing to consider amendment of town of Abington zoning map by revising the floodplain wetland protection district and FEMA flood maps.
I'm going to leave. I wish you all well. Stay safe, everyone. I'll see you soon.
Stay safe and well, Sean.
On, on the FEMA floodplain maps and everything else, any discussion on that or a motion? Bob, I know you've had experience with, with this. I mean, it does get involved with a lot of properties around town, but you know more about that than I do.
How do we, how do we weigh this? I mean, I haven't looked at the difference between one map and the next map. It does seem to impact people's properties and their insurance.
That's my concern.
How do we do that?
So there's only a couple of panels affected. I'm not sure what they are. I don't know how you would tell from one to the other. The images that are on our website, I grabbed from the FEMA website. I, what I can tell you is that if the federal government is not giving any city or town any kind of waiver or consideration due to COVID and that these need to be approved by July 20th. And if they're not, then people will lose their flood insurance.
Yeah, I mean, the FEMA maps, the FEMA maps, I, I had an issue with my house being near the pond. I had to do a a lawnmower to prove that I wasn't in the floodplain, but the maps, the federal government.
And you can, and Bob's right, you can file an appeal for all intents and purposes. And saying your property's not in the floodplain and and reduce your, your flood insurance are eliminated that way. But if we don't do it, then then the people who currently need flood insurance and are getting it will not be eligible. Because the town is, would be like kind of in a, they wouldn't have any flood maps. And they're not budging on this. This has gone.
I ran into the problem with refinancing. The bank required me to have flood insurance and I had to prove that I wasn't in the floodplain, but it creates a whole host of problems.
I just want to be able to explain to people what the changes are, if there are any. And right now, I don't know how to do that.
I agree. I mean, other than us and anybody else dealing with FEMA at the moment, how would anybody know that this is changing?
I literally think there were three panel changes. If you give me one second, I can go sprint them and tell you what they are.
Okay.
While she's gone, I probably should read it because I guess it's a matter of record. Public hearing notice, the planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 1, 2020 at 6:10 PM by a GoToMeeting software to conduct this hearing due to the pandemic. You can contact, you can connect here and so forth. They will hold a hearing to consider the following amendment to the town of Abington zoning map, 175-6, by revising the floodplain wetland, watershed protection district and the FEMA flood map. Through the undated panels shown on the Plumb County PRIM map effective July 22, 2020, and the third of the signed by the Plumb County Fire and Rescue Study Report dated July 20, 2020, FIS test. The updated PRIM panels and the FIS report are entitled to Town Road and South West. Further, to amend 175-6 zoning map to provide for variances of state regulations. Questions can be directed to the planning board department at 781-982-0069 or by email at ICAA and everything else. Wendy Smith, Cameron Advertising, Brock Enterprises, 616 and 825. So. We're going.
Oh, okay. So. This email is from Eric Carlson from DCR. Liz, I apologize, but for somehow I sent the incorrect panel information to you in my earlier comments. Here's corrected information. 25023C0088J, July 17, 2012. 25023C089K, July 22, 2020. 25023C0093K, July 22, 2020. 225023C0157J, July 17, 2012. 25023C0176J, July 17, 2012. 25023C0177J, July 17, 2012. 25023C0178J, July 17, 2012. 25023C0179J, July 17, 2012. And 25023C0181K, July 22, 2020. So those were the panel numbers he gave me to be changed.
And I'm sure they've done the recent improvement of the either in the floodplain wetlands or other, right?
I'm sorry, what?
I'm sure it's an engineering situation where you have a potness come in or something and you determine those areas. So I'm sure they're.
This is their update. He reached out to me last December and January. I got a notice late yesterday that the letter of final determination will be issued today, January 22. This means the effective date for the affected flood insurance rate map firm panels will be July 22. This will be the date for the flood insurance study as well. So the affected, so there's only three affected panels.
Which is?
I'm looking at the map. Three panels is the whole town practically.
I know from experience, unless you agree to what they say there, unless you get an engineer to try to prove them wrong, you don't have this thing. It affects members, people in town that want to have the insurance. Bob and I have had discussions on this way back when we first did this and we had a lot of discussions with Bob when dealing with a mortgage company. I know Bob, you know a lot more about it than I do.
Yeah, you don't really have a lot of say other than proving them wrong, which required me to hire an engineer and actually do a, a survey from county markers and elevations. It was a little bit of a process. And then the engineer has got to file it with, with the feds.
It looks like a lot has to do with the French, the French screen.
Frencher stream.
Someone can tell me why we shouldn't approve it.
Yeah.
A lot, but I, I guess.
Like we know any better.
We have to, but I mean, just like we were saying, this is what's being changed. I mean, we don't have to do that tonight, but at some point we should. I mean, I'll make a motion to approve because we have to.
Yeah, I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Bruce, who would be a person that we can talk to to figure out exactly what the impact is and why?
I would recommend my coworker, Laurie Muncie, Old Colony Planning Council.
Do you want me to send her an email asking that question?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is she still working from home too?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
We're working from home until July 6th, they tell me now.
Nice.
Timing is awful, but that's all it was.
I'm finding all things that interfere with me working at my house has a problem.
Any further business to come before? We, no comment.
Yes, I do have, we sent something that, did someone volunteer us to look at outdoor seating?
Oh.
So very quickly, there was some discussion with the town manager and the building inspector to kind of allow a blanket waiver for the board to allow temporary outdoor seating, temporary outdoor seating for, without site plan review. And then if they wanted to make it permanent, obviously they'd have to come back to the board. Town council rendered an opinion that you couldn't do that. So I sent along the opinion, but I took the agenda item off because there was no point in having it on because you, you can't do it.
Okay. But it's interesting, a client came up to me, Giadino's.
Yeah. He's the one who kicked it off, but there is a lot of them that are looking to do some temporary seating during this re-entry phase because they can only use a small portion of their regular restaurant space.
Yeah.
There's a lot involved. They, if they have a liquor license, they'd have to go to the Board of Selectmen and it has to go to the ABCC. So they're trying to streamline that aspect of it. But you guys may end up doing some, some additional meetings to maybe hear some of these if this is the route they choose to go.
I was curious to see what the town manager would come up with because I had been sort of organizing my mind how, how to move this through the government so that you're getting the input from everybody and everybody's doing it you know, correctly so that someone's not getting driven over and you don't have alcohol leaving the, leaving the place. Go ahead.
The other thing is it would be temporary and of course, one of the questions I have is if you have an alcohol outside, you have to go into the building too. And how do you get in there? How do you get out of there? There's a whole load of things that are going on. Sounds to be the planning board's stand. I have no objection to a temporary situation that, you know, helps some of these people stay in business, but as far as being a permanent situation, then I think the planning board has to totally get involved. But it sounded to me like they could do something temporary, but they may not be able to also.
It doesn't sound like there's no, like, like Liz was saying, there's no mechanism. You have to figure out how to work around for the purposes of trying to restart an economy. We just don't have zoning codes for that. But as he came to me, he wanted to do a permanent deck. And I thought, well, you do that, that will see your permit till the end of, end of August at the earliest, if everything went perfectly for him. Because they gotta, they have to hire an engineer. And that's why I thought that if you look at something temporary and it, you know, the dude as good as the weather is, it good, you know, if it's raining, you can't serve. You're barely using your restaurant. So all that seating is gone in there because you're just using outdoor seating. It's not an easy thing, but it does seem like, I wish there was some way we could figure out how to streamline that as a town as, as opposed to trying to wait for months of.
He's actually working on trying to, the initial idea was if you guys could kind of waive it or do something along those lines. They were going to have a group with the fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector. And like have a group that would review the plans, make sure they were safe for temporary and then try to get it off to the ABC, who has said it was gonna try to fast track these applications.
All right.
Yeah. So I guess, I mean, right now the problem is they can't waive site plan review, I guess.
Right.
This is, this is the other issue and I take blame for having a conversation with the town manager and kind of helping get this going, I guess. You can't do a blanket because then if one neighbor objects, it kills everything. So you could do it on a case by case basis. You could have, you know, 20 restaurants apply and grant 20 waivers. But, and then if a neighbor objects, they're only objecting to that one specific waiver. That's how other, another town that I know is approaching, another city I know is approaching it. Where they're basically having all restaurants file of, you know, an application. I think they're going under the accessory use provision that was mentioned in the letter that we received. Having it declared an accessory use because it's a temporary situation, it's not a permanent change. But they're then reviewing it individually because a blanket could then be knocked out by one single protest. And, and part of it was also, you know, we should as a board make it easier for the businesses. And if neighbors want to protest because something's going crazy, then that's the, that falls on them. But, you know, we're trying to do the right thing to help the businesses out by streamlining it. Supposedly there's a bill moving in the House or will be in the Senate and the House to address this. I don't know how, I don't know what it would look like, but that's supposedly something that's being strongly considered is how do you do this? Because right now every restaurant has to go through three or four steps to, to do this for 90 days. So. I don't know.
As long as there's discussion between now and July, it doesn't wait for a month. But that's good. So you're, you're talking with the town manager? You had your talk with the town manager?
I've had a couple of conversations and he's mentioned, and Wayne, did you, I hope he reached out to you as well.
I haven't talked to him about that, no. I haven't talked, I, he's reached out to say hello, no, no discussion.
All right, okay. Well, I don't have anything else new.
Our motion to adjourn will be in order.
Motion to adjourn. Nice to see you guys.
Nice to see you all.
All right. I'll second it.
All those in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye.